...will be put on the number first by the League of Women Voters. This space we're using is part of Vincent Methodist Church, who runs the care kitchen and soup kitchen. Hen, a soup lady. I'd like to introduce everybody to Reverend Dave Leduke, who will tell us a little bit more about this space.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Reverend Dave Leduke, pastor at Vincent Church, and we do want to welcome you. If you don't know, Vincent Church is the oldest church in Nutley, founded in 1829, and moved to this property down by the river from Passaic Avenue in 1910. And we've continued to have a vibrant ministry here in the community. This room is our fellowship hall. The Cub Scouts meet here, Girl Scouts meet here, AA groups meet here, MS support group meets here. We also have our community school in Nutley meets on this level, and they use this room as well. And as John mentioned, we have a care kitchen. We partner with about six churches in town to provide a hot meal on most Saturdays, four out of five Saturdays a month, to 50 to 60 different folks who are in need. We also connect with our Care Pantry, which provides personal care items to people in need once a month, a bag to about 50 or 60 families. We also have our Sunday School. We have one with 30 children in our Sunday School, youth program, children's choir, different choirs. We're helping to organize the Crop Hunger Walk this Sunday. It will be at 2:00 in the Oval. We also are having our trunk or treat here in the parking lot and in the fellowship hall next Sunday afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. Our theme is "It's All About Love," growing in our love of God and our love for others. This room, as well as our Philhauer Chapel upstairs, is available for rental, for parties, and for events. And we do want to note for you, though, our church policy is that no alcohol is allowed in the building. And that can actually be a plus, right, for some families and some events. So we want to thank John Lee for thinking of us to host this forum. It's an honor to do that. John, Colglazer, Rick Townsend are around if you need anything. The restrooms are out the back and to the right up the hall if you need that. And I do have some brochures and things about the church on the table. I do have a church council meeting, a board meeting tonight I have to attend to, but I hope you have a great evening, and may God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The church council. So tonight, we're going to be asking questions of each of the candidates. Before we introduce the candidates, we have a timer. Erin Ryan. So some of the questions will have a one-minute time to answer frame, others will have two. At 45 seconds, the person answering the question will see a yellow card go up, which means hurry up, get to the end. At a minute or two minutes, you'll see the red card go up. So basically, yellow, you've got 15 seconds to make it through that intersection. Red light, you've got the ticket. We've got our six candidates here. They're in ballot position. Let everybody just say their name and what position you are, whether it's, you know, 17B, 42A. And we'll start on the end.
Hi, my name is Ken Riley. Thank Tepeh Do for having us tonight and the church for hosting this event. And we are on line I on your ballot, and I am I-1.
I'm Teresa Terry Quirk. That's the name that I go by, but I'm I-2.
My name is Erica Zaro. I am I-3.
Hi, I'm Salvall Samo. I'm I-4.
Ryan Klein. Hi, everybody. Top five.
And last but not least, Debbie Russo, I-6.
The format is going to be a little bit different than some of the ones I expected. Everybody's going to get the same question, but they're not going to be in the same sequence. So for instance, Ken might get the question, "Is it pork roll or is it Taylor ham?" And he'll have the minute to answer it. Right after that, Sal might get, you know, "Can you put pizza, can you put pineapple on pizza?" They're going to rotate. At the end of that night, everybody should have the same questions, where you can track what they get, but that way somebody doesn't immediately hear somebody's answer, so you're not responding to the person. You get to answer, so you don't know what's going to come up, because it's in random sequence, and I've got little numbers at the bottom to turn the pages, so I don't even know what the second question is going to be. First question tonight is going to be a one-word answer with no timing. We just want to see where everybody stands on football teams. In terms, we're going to go in sequence from 1 to 6. Best football team ever, is it the Jets, the Giants, or the Nutley Raiders?
Giants.
Giants. Not the Giants, I'll go with the Nutley Raiders.
Okay, it was Jets, Giants, Nutley Raiders. Okay, we're throwing this really easy mob ball out to you again. Let's start reading this, let's start answering the questions again. Think about it, let's read the questions again. Jets, Giants, or Nutley Raiders?
Nutley Raiders.
Nutley Raiders.
Nutley Raiders.
Raiders. 86 Giants.
That's Nutley Raiders.
Good answer.
So, the format is not going to always be such an easy question like that. Okay, so we're going to start answering now. Erin is ready to start timing people.
Is it two minutes or one question?
First one is going to be a two-minute.
It's all right after you've answered the question.
Yes, I'm going to read the question, and then I'm going to say the person who's going to answer it. So everybody's going to listen carefully. Okay. "What do you see as the relationship between the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools?" Ken Riley.
The relationship between the superintendent and the Board of Education of schools is the superintendent reports to the Board directly. They oversee her, they evaluate her, and it's not their job to run the district, it's the Board's job to ensure that the district is well-run, and that includes the oversight of superintendent. It's the superintendent's job to oversee staff, curriculum, to make sure that his or her goals are achieved that the Board sets anyway.
Okay, our next question. "What are the biggest challenges facing our school district today?" Debbie Russo.
Two minutes, one minute.
We're going to do, let's do one minute. I think we can sum it up in a minute.
Okay, I think some of our biggest challenges are obviously the overcrowding that we're experiencing now and going to continue to experience. I think budget constraints are a huge problem for our district. It's hard to move forward and bring in new programs on a 2% cap budget that I was sitting on the Board when we voted to move the election and budget from an April election to November in order to save money and not have to pay for an additional election. Keeping kids engaged is one of my biggest concerns in our school system, and that home school community is another challenge. I don't know that it's one of our biggest ones, but something that I'm concerned about. And the mental health of our students is another concern in our district.
Thank you. Why do you want to be on the Board of Education? Erin. Oh, I'll leave it at one minute.
I have been a parent advocate for the last 14, almost 15 years, and I have come to many different Board of Education meetings, Board of Commissioner meetings, on many different issues in regards to the health and education and safety of the children throughout the years. And the thing that just changed for me was the fact that in regards to the security situation that we had this past year, and the fact that things were not being done as quickly as they should have, really concerned me and actually took me over the edge to say, you know what, standing at the microphone is not really working. I need to become more involved than I already am. And that's basically what it's about.
Thank you. We're going to flip over. It's going to be a two-minute answer. "Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University opened with students arriving this past June. What ideas do you have to give Nutley students exposure to the medical sciences?" Ryan.
You know, I look at this opportunity as a great one for the township as well as for the district. You know, I'm a big fan of collaboration. When I first became an administrator in my current district, first thing we did, first thing I did was reach out to Montclair State and try to strengthen that relationship. You know, that was exhibited today as we sat down with professors from Montclair State and teachers from Belleville, as well as teachers and administrators from Nutley, to talk about running an off-site leadership program. You know, the opportunities that are here for our science program, for our writing program, you know, are tremendous in regards to getting our kids into the pro, into the university educational setting, you know, whether it's through the transition program that is currently in place at Nutley High School, or through our STEM, our STEM cabins. You know, I feel like, you know, if we could tap into the, no pun intended, tap into the resources that we have in the surrounding areas, you know, and this is going to be a huge one, you know, as far as, you know, our kids going in, and for our teachers, too. You know, I mean, for, to be able to get the experts, you know, on that campus into our classrooms and vice versa, you know, it would be tremendous.
Thank you. Tell us something you've done in the last year that has nothing to do with education that would give Nutley some insight into who you are as a person. Erin.
Within the past year, I have dedicated my time and efforts to philanthropic things. I also have dedicated a lot of time to learning about the lack of security in schools and how I could be an asset to something like that. I do a lot of things in my company that are for other people. I'm part of the community there, most part of the community here, but my company is a quite large community where it gives me the chance to work with many organizations, things that range from health organizations to soldier organizations, when the Warrior Project, where I'm really able to learn a plethora of things and get my hands in learning into all of it.
Great, thank you. The Nutley Board of Education has to work together. Sometimes you find yourself advocating for some stance that may not be popular to the entire Board. Can you give an example where you had to compromise in a situation, either in the Board situation, or some work, or some other volunteer situation? Salvall Samo. Two minutes on this one.
How much?
Two.
Okay, so, hi, Salvall Samo. For those of you that walked in. Since I got on the Board, and one of the reasons why I got on the Board was issues with spacing. My children attend Yanacaw School, and in the years that predated my first term, the Board had already been working on solutions. And over the course of time, while we're in, you know, sessions with the architect and identifying needs, there are eight other opinions other than my own, including the superintendent, I guess, attempt, and the business administrator, an 11. And identifying concerns, prioritizing, oftentimes puts, you know, priorities at odds. But at the end of the day, working collaboratively and collegially, knowing when to let go of your point of view because it's not the prevailing point of view is an important, it's an important thing you need to do in order to continue to move the ball forward for the district, for the students, for the project. So if you're asking for one example, that is, that's a real, a real big example of working together, of, you know, knowing when to push my concerns, but also knowing when to accept when it wouldn't prevail.
Great, thank you. "What are the biggest challenges that the Nutley Public School District faces today?" Erin. I think one minute on that one.
Okay, in regards to, there are several. In regards to safety is the biggest challenge at this point, because if we, if our children are not safe, how, you know, everything else doesn't really matter. Academics is important, supporting the teachers so that they can support the children, supporting the special needs population. That's one of the things I really focused on for my last 15 years as a parent advocate, making sure that children do receive whatever services they need in whatever programs they need. And making, and overcrowding is an issue, but I think that there are some things that we can address with that in regards to how we, we can see different classes and where they could be.
Great, thank you. Do we need to get some more chairs in the back? Do we think we need, do we not think? There's more people here than we expected. I think there's more people here than there were last night before the bed meeting. So, the Nutley Public School District has accomplished a lot of things in the last few years, things like the Chromebook One-to-One Program. There's new math and English language curriculums in grades 6 to 12. What goals do you have for the next five to 10 years, or what goals would you like to see for the next five to 10 years down the road? Ryan. We're going to do, we're going to do a minute on this.
A minute, okay. You spoke to some of the, some of the highlights. Three years ago, when I was up here, really felt like, like the foundation was being put in place. Six years ago, we brought in, you know, new hiring techniques, a five-year curriculum review cycle, new curriculum, new programs in regards to, you know, our language arts program, our math program, science, phys ed, world language. You know, in the last couple of years, we really, the last three years, actually, we've seen those results, you know, through Park Assessment, through our, through our own data analytics system, Performance Matters, which closely monitors how our students, you know, take assessments that are standard-driven, comparative. So what would I like to see continue? I want to make sure that, that none of that is disrupted, and that we continue, we continue with the things that are in place, you know, in watch, because for three years now, we've seen our Park scores increase, and we keep it going, though, they'll be, they'll continue.
Everything is being recorded in multiple places, hands going all over the place. Okay, do you have, or did you have in the past, children in our school system? How does that inform your perspective about how to work in the district? And what information would you use outside of having kids in the district to inform your perspective about how to serve as a Board member? This will be a two-minute answer, but if you want to go shorter, you can. And the person we're going to throw this question is going to be Ken Riley. If you need me to repeat it, I can-
No, you don't. I'm good with it. I'm fortunate that I have three adult, grown children that went through the Nutley School System. Proud to say that they've all become extremely successful. My oldest son is living in Hong Kong, has a great job out there. My youngest daughter just graduated law school in the top of her class at Rutgers University. She's working for an assignment judge in Hudson County right now. My other daughter just finished acupuncture school after graduating Montclair State University. So it just goes to show that we have a good system here. Academically, I think as long as kids want to go home and study and read, and the parents are helping them with that process, I think anybody can win here. That being said, as Ryan said earlier, new curriculum a few years ago. STEM is big now because of what's happened. It's a national program now with this, because we've fallen behind other countries. As someone that hires on a regular basis, I can tell you, when I get resumes, they come from around the world. They just don't come from New York or New Jersey. They come from every country, people looking to move. So that's why we have this aggressive stance right now to improve academically. I'm happy that we've improved in the last year as far as our standing in New Jersey Monthly, but we can do better, and we will do better.
Thank you. "What do you see as the relationship between the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools?" Erin.
Um-
We're doing two minutes.
As Ken had stated previously, the Board is really there to supervise the superintendent, and the superintendent is the one who is in charge of the school system. I mean, it's, we are the ones who just would oversee whatever, and we're really actually the ones who make the policy to ensure that things are going correctly. And, but it is the superintendent who's in charge of the daily programming and those types of issues that come up during the course of the day and the course of the year.
"What are the biggest challenges our school district faces today?" Ryan. We're doing a minute.
Biggest challenges our school district faces today, overcrowding, without any hesitation. You know, it's the only thing that, it's the biggest thing that threatens our academic success, as well as, you know, the overall well-being of our students. You know, there's a, there's a direct correlation between class size and student success. We've been very successful the last couple of years in regards to bringing up our test scores, and we've been doing that, you know, without spending as much money as neighboring townships. However, you know, when we're challenged with, you know, with our current 7-8 model in the middle school, you see a dip in our scores. You know, we're making, we're making fantastic success on the lower end, and we're only making good success when we get to 7, 8, 9. And we can make a lot more success with a middle school model than a small class size. A middle school model is 6, 7, 8.
Thank you. "Why do you want to be on the Board of Education?" Erica.
I want to be on the Board of Education for many reasons. The first reason is my issues with security. I had an issue last year after the Parkland shooting, where I wrote a letter to the Board of Education Superintendent expressing my concerns about the security in my son's own school. I followed up with it at meetings afterwards, along with other parents who shared the same concerns, their children in their schools, and their responses were subdued at best. And it was at that time that I said, instead of complaining about something, that I would actually do something about it. The district needs to, in my eyes, pay more attention to it. I have passion as a parent. My child is going to be in the school system for 11 more years. I have an incredibly large vested interest in it. I feel that from passion comes creativity, drive, and the pursuit of excellence. And I'd like the opportunity to put that passion and excellence and pursuit for the town.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
"What is the Board of Education's primary purpose?" Debbie.
The role of the Board of Education is fourfold.
One minute.
I'm sorry, one minute. Hire and evaluate the superintendent, set policy, approve the budget. But I think the biggest component of that is being a liaison to the community, bringing the information we have out to the parents whenever possible, and taking their feedback back to the administration to form their thoughts and goals and ideals. I think that as the liaison is the biggest. We need to be visible and vocal and accessible to our community.
Thank you. We've actually answered a lot. We're only 26 minutes into this. Tell us something you've done in the last year that has nothing to do with education that would give Nutley some insight into who you are as a person. Sal.
One minute. Recognizing some of the faces in the audience, something I've done in the last year is I'm a coach. I'm a parent of two boys. Matthew is eight, PJ is 10. And we're in every sport everywhere. Last year, I coached Farm League for the first time, which was new and exciting. I don't know that you'd call what I did on the baseball field coaching, but we had a season and we had a team. Right now, presently, I'm coaching Matthew's third-grade soccer team. In the past, I also coached PJ's basketball team.
Excellent, thank you. Up to the beginning of all the questions. They're just shaking it up here a little bit. "What are the biggest challenges facing our school district today?" Hen.
I agree with you. How much longer?
We'll do one.
It's kind of tight.
We'll do it two.
Thank you. Lady gave me two. First of all, since he gave me two minutes, thank, I would like to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is my fourth Board of Education campaign, and I've never seen a turnout like this. And even though it may look like a light turnout, it's quadruple what I've ever seen before. So thank you all for taking the time and caring about what's going on, because we do, too. The most important issue, obviously, is overcrowding. We know it, you know it, everybody knows it. The only difference between what, what we're doing as a ticket and what the incumbents are doing is they believe in a second attempt at a $70 million referendum, and we don't believe in that. We believe that it's a bad plan, it's ill-conceived, it's way too much money, it puts us over the cap. We have a $100 million cap for our bonding capacity. We're exceeding that cap with this referendum. And even, even if I'm wrong on that, we're very close at $100 million. And here's the issue with hitting that $100 million cap on the bonding, is we have no idea what's coming down on On3. So we want to spend $70 million without knowing what's going on at Hopman La Roche? We can't, because that project is going to go in a few years, and we're not going to have any money to increase our bonding capacity and be able to go out again for a new school with whatever, whatever we're going to need there. We have to sit down with Prism Capital, which owns that development. We haven't done it. We haven't sat down with commissioners to talk about what's going on there. We need to address the sixth-grade overcrowding issue. That can happen in a matter of months. We can do a prefab, prefab classrooms. They did eight, they did eight in, in New York for $2 million. They came in six months. They did a 100,000-square-foot built school in Camden for $19 million, and we're asking for seven. Doesn't make sense. We need to sit down and think it over.
Since we brought up the idea of On3, Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University. Try fitting that into a headline in the paper. "Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University opened this past June, classes starting June 9th. What ideas do you have to give Nutley students exposure to the medical schools and medical sciences?" We're going to throw this over to Sal.
How long?
We're going to do two minutes.
Okay, so, it's really exciting to have a medical school right here in our own community. In terms of how the school district reaches out to them, that should be, you know, guided by the, you know, administrators led by the superintendent. Those connections shouldn't be made by the Board members, but the Board members should support those connections. There's a, there's a tremendous amount of, of brain bank there. There's, there's so much talent that's going there now and will be coming there, particularly for the medical school. I would certainly be in favor of supporting any, you know, pedagogical outreach that the superintendent recommended that would put. Those professors, those professionals in our classrooms through the Health and Wellness Program, that's part of our five-year strategic plan, I see that as a perfect fit. And accessing that upper, that higher-level educational talent, their professors, their doctors, their, their, and all the medical professionals tying into our five-year strategic plan, I would definitely support something like that.
Thank you very much. "Tell us something you've done in the last year that has nothing to do with education that would give Nutley insight into who you are as a person?" Erin. One minute.
It has nothing to do with education. One of the things that I did, for one with my organization, is that we, for the district, we hired a speaker that actually will be coming on November 6th. And we did this through proceeds from our tricky trade that we have every two years- And we did this through proceeds from our tricky trade that we have every two years. And it's a small little tricky trade. It's nothing like the PTOs do. We can't compete with you guys. But it's a little tricky trade and we make sure that we take those funds and we give that back to the school district. So, it's not really about what I did for education, but it's what my organization did. And it's really important that we really give the teachers the tools that they need in order to help the children.
What is the name of your organization?
Nutley Parenting Agency Network. NPM.
The Nutley Public School District has accomplished a lot in the last few years. Everything from the Chromebooks to new math and English language arts curriculum. What goals do you have five or 10 years down the road if you're elected to the Board, Erica?
As far as the curriculum?
Let's do a minute.
Goals for us would be to make sure that the curriculum is continued to be progressive, that the students continue to receive all services, if not more services, workshops with teachers, implementing them that could be filtered down to students in all different capacities, not just in STEM or it could actually be filtered down into mental issues too that the students have concerns about and the parents do. Having, like I said, workshops and different ways to facilitate these things between the parents, the teachers, the students. And to have the curriculum, like I said, be more progressive. There are things that 15 minutes a day could be implemented into their current curriculum that would make a big difference on the big scale.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now the big tough question. I brought a number that does not exist here.
Oh, no, one more.
Okay, one more. So, what happens with live TV? What is the Board of Education's primary purpose, Ryan?
Board's purpose is multifaceted in regards to, you know, reaching out to the community, making sure that you represent the community as a whole. But I think the biggest function of a board, you know, the evaluation of superintendent, that's always there. That's just a job responsibility that you have to do. But it's really goal setting and making sure that the goals that are set collaboratively with the superintendent, with the district administration, and with the community. Those goals are, you know, the policies are there to make sure the goals happen. The funding is there to make sure the goals happen. And then we have, you know, we have true systematic things in place to make sure that we can measure those goals. Through the two strategic plans that I've sat through, you know, we've made sure that we've had five-year goals as well as yearly goals. And those goals have really driven this district, you know, instructionally in places that we haven't seen.
Thank you for your answers. Why do you want to be re-elected to the Board, Debbie? You've got a minute.
Okay. I've always believed that as the schools go, so does our community and that we should do what we can, however we can, even if it's only an hour a month or 25 hours a month or whatever it may be possible. My passion for the children in this district and this community started when I was kind of volunteered to be a classroom mom for my daughter at Lincoln School. I became very involved in the PTOs there. I stayed with that, became involved in the PTOs in the middle school, the high school, PT Council. I think we have to give back to the community and serve our community because this is a position of service, not a position of power. We alone have no power. Together as a group is how we make our decisions. Our current board now, we've been working very well collaboratively, analyzing all aspects that we can. So, I want to stay on this board to continue giving back to our community, to continue making sure that all of the children in our district are getting everything that they need to have to have the best education possible.
Thank you. What are the biggest challenges the Nutley Public School District faces today? Two minutes. One of the biggest challenges the Nutley Public School District faces today, Sal.
Oh, I think it's clearly overcrowding. You know, when you're out in the community and you have friends telling you that their children are taking speech or reading or extra help in hallways, stairwells, classrooms, in closets between rooms. I think we absolutely could do better by our children in getting involved. And one of the reasons or motivations that I had is my two children attend Yanacoo School. There were trailers there when we moved in. There were conversations about doing something about this as early as 2013, 2014, 2015. I decided to put my name up and see what was going on. Just to let you know, we work together collaboratively again to put forward a solution, 20 years, 15, 10, 15-year solution. I do want to say that we do not go over our cap as was stated. That was presented last night. Karen Yaman said that our cap is related to our town valuation. She estimated it, not estimated, she put it at 104. The referendum is around $68 million, not $70 million, all told. There'd be $36 million bonding capacity after that. Our kids deserve spaces. They don't belong out in trailers, they don't belong in closets, and certainly don't belong in hallways or stairwells.
Great, thank you very much. What do you see as the relationship between the Board of Education and the Nutley Superintendent of Schools, Erica?
See, the superintendent is the person who runs the district. The board ensures that she does her or his job correctly and efficiently. The board also has other responsibilities, the responsible to the children. The definition of a board member is to have best interest of the children at all times. And I think that that's one of the most paramount and wonderful qualities that a board member should have. That, I mean, the policies and everything, all of that is important. But if you do not, at the end of the day, have the children's best interest at heart, you're not going to be as efficient as you should be.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tell us something you've done in the last year that has nothing at all to do with education that will give Nutley some insight into who you are as a person, Ken? This is a one-minute response.
At my office, I had a young man, 36 years old, three years ago, have a massive heart attack and die. It was very sad. It devastated the entire company. And every year we do a heart walk for him in Jones Beach. So, I just did that actually two weeks ago. But that's the kind of thing I've done my whole life. I've been on the Board of Directors of the Red Cross. I was president of Nutley Grocery. I was on Board of Directors at the Nutley Museum. I chaired the charity wall for the Nutley Service Bureau. And that's how I give back to this community that's given so much to me and my family.
Great, thank you very much. Do you or have you had children in the Nutley Public School System? How does that inform your perspective on how to react as a board member? And how does that just inform your perspective to work as a board member in the district, Debbie?
And of course, my daughter just walked out. Yes, I currently have a freshman in Nutley High School. I have two children that graduated. One of them is an engineer. The other one is in graduate school for cybersecurity. One of my three kids, and I won't identify which one, was classified and had a wonderful experience with the special services in this district. The other one should be classified because that child is highly, highly gifted and that is a special service that they need. How does that influence me on my role as a board? I think it's a very valuable place to come from because I can have the Board of Ed hat and I can have the mom hat. And they're interchangeable. And I realize there's two sides to every story. When our kids come home and say they have too much homework and they didn't, and I find out they didn't do their homework, it gives us a unique perspective. I said, oh, it's over there, I'm sorry. So, I think it's a very unique perspective to have kids in the school, kids that have gone through the entire school system and one still currently in the school.
Wait, I maybe saw the yellow card.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Nutley has accomplished a lot in the last year. Everything from the Chromebooks to new math, new English language arts. What do you, what goals do you have for the next five or 10 years down the road for the Nutley School District if you're elected, Terry?
Well, I really think that we really have to look at different types of schools that we have here. Like, say, Lincoln School, they need to have not just one gym teacher, they need to have two. We need to look at where our preschools are and whether or not we can get a separate facility for them to open up some space. We also need to look at how much we're spending on attorney fees and how much are we spending on administrative costs in regards to assistant superintendents? We've always had one. It seems like we are tending to be a little bit top-heavy. We're tending to have two or three and that's a concern for me.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to the big, long name again. Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University opened this past June. Students attending starting June 9th. What ideas do you have to give Nutley students exposure to medical sciences, Ken?
I think that it's awesome that they were able to complete that deal with Hackensack and Seton Hall. It's a mile away from the high school. I think that we can easily go back and forth and bring kids there and show them in the facility and learn, as Ryan said earlier, learn from their staff and have their staff meet our staff and maybe do some in-service with our staff so that they can enthuse our youth. And hopefully, a lot of them will want to go to medical school, like my daughter.
Thank you. The Board of Education has to work together as a team. Sometimes you find yourself advocating for some kind of idea that may not be popular with the majority of the board. Can you give some example, either on the board or somewhere else, where you had to compromise in a situation? Oh, how much was my sound? I moved down as a one. Okay, you've got a minute. Okay, I'm going to repeat the question again since I interrupted. Board of Education has to work together, but sometimes you find yourself advocating for a stand that may not be popular with the majority of the board. Can you give an example where you've had to compromise in a situation, Ryan?
Yeah. The Board of Ed, you're taking nine individuals, putting them in a room, either in subcommittees, three at a time, or collectively. Putting them in a room until sometimes 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. And I can assure you that Balsammy next to me gets really cranky after about 45. Russo.
10 o'clock.
Russo is pretty much always cranky. When you're back there and you're fighting for things, and there's a lot of fighting, whatever you see in public, there's a lot of fighting and there's always give and takes. Some of the things that, you know, I've continued to stand my ground is the calendar. You know, I had to compromise. Sometimes I vote no, but having that week off in February, you know, I feel like is a disruption to the educational process. The districts have gone to two or three days. So, that's one area that I've compromised a lot.
Thank you very much. What is the Board of Education's primary purpose, Erica? One minute.
The Board of Education's primary purpose is to ensure that the children's education is being led in the right direction, is to ensure that there's no child left behind, is to ensure that all children are, have fair, equal services, to ensure their best interests and their best wellbeing every day, all day, in every aspect, whether it be educationally, security, overcrowding. They need to ensure their safety. They need to ensure that they get to school every day safe, that they come home from school every day safe, and that there's nothing in danger there.
Thank you very much. Why do you want to be re-elected to the Board of Education, Sal?
So, why do I want to be re-elected to the Board of Education? It has to do with the core parts of me that made me run to begin with. I'm a parent. I have two boys in schools. I'm a teacher. Education is my life's work and passion. I've bonded with many families and the children of my, and the friends of my children through coaching. I'm a product of the Nutley Public School System, Nutley, I mean, Nutley 96, Radcliffe 90. And I've said it before and a lot of people, you know, point out how much I always talk about Nutley. There's a really great case to be made that I wouldn't be able to do what I do, have what I have, if I didn't come through the Nutley Public School System. I have the available time, my wife would disagree, to put in, and certainly my children would, to put in, I have a particular lens.
What are the biggest challenges facing our school district today, Erica?
The biggest challenges facing our school district are without a doubt overcrowding and security. Security is one of them, the lack of security. It's multifaceted. There are different aspects of it. The windows that are too low that need to be blocked out. The children being able to leave for school at lunch and come back in and I guarantee who's coming back in behind them. Just shooting in general, I mean, car. A SLE officer, a class through officer could be in that school, protect that child. Is a vetted person, has to go through rigorous, rigorous background checks, has to have tests and things done. And he is somebody that is there to protect your child. He's not somebody that's there to do anything adverse. Metal detectors wouldn't be a bad idea. But security needs to be addressed. It needed to be addressed six months ago. It's too pressing. Every day you hear of a new thing, a new school that is implementing it, a new school that has had a threat and their parents are done with it. And we need to get on the list. The list is growing and we're not growing with it.
Thank you. What do you see as the relationship between the Board of Education and the Superintendent of the Nutley Public Schools, Debbie?
The relationship between the Board of Ed and the superintendent? We hire and evaluate the superintendent. That's critical. I've gone through that process twice since my service on the board. We're an oversight committee. I think we need to have somewhat of a symbiotic relationship though. We can't be a Board of Nine against the superintendent or a majority of us. Again, we need to work together and collaborate, bounce ideas off of each other. This open dialogue that we have, and like Mr. Klein said, we don't always agree. Many times we don't agree. But the bottom line at the end of the day is what is best for our kids and that's what we push for.
Thank you. Do you or have you had children in the Nutley Public School District? How does it feel? How does this form your perspective? And if you don't have kids in the district right now, what information do you use to form your perspective if you were elected to the Board, Terry?
Okay, I do have children in the district. Not in the district, but they were in the district. My youngest is all the way back there, I'm going to embarrass him now. He just got out of college. And my two older ones, and I actually have been a resident here for 27 years. We came when my younger daughter was a year old and my older daughter was six. So I've been here for a while and I know through the children, you know how when your kids come home and they tell you things, you get your information there, but I also get it because I have a parent group that parents call me or email me and they'll say, okay, this is what little Johnny had experienced at school. And so I'm able to get enough information to understand what's actually going on in different buildings. So I get a bit of information from them.
Thank you very much. Now you're saying your youngest son is back there?
Yes, right there.
Okay, everybody turn around and wave to her youngest son. Because the candidate did say embarrass my sons while. See, I bet that League of Women voters will not do that at their forum.
They won't.
They will not. Okay, so the Nutley Public School District has accomplished a lot of things in the last few years. Chromebook one-to-one program in the sixth to 12th grade, new math, new English language arts curriculum. What goals do you have or would like to see for the next five or 10 years down the road in our district, Sal?
I've already spoke to fixing class sizes and spaces, but the transition to the middle school model, I think, is one. There's two in particular. One, that full implementation of the middle school model. I don't think numbers lie at all. If you happen to go on to the district website and see the park scores over a three-year period, but then particularly the results of the pilot program at Radcliffe School last year, tremendous leap in the amount of kids that are at or above state level or beyond outpacing state averages and the park continuum averages. I think that pilot this year will again show a tremendous progress because of the way they're being instructed. Secondly, mental health and wellness is very important because, you know, it's 24 hours with kids now. And if we can support them in giving coping skills and problem-solving skills for how to address how they're constantly involved through social networking, that kind of...
The next question that Sal answered. We'll just hold up the red flag two seconds to see if he stops.
I'm a teacher and I'm a rule follower.
Okay. So, the big one, the big question. Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University opened this past June. Classes starting on June 9th. What ideas do you have to give Nutley students exposure to medical sciences? Terry?
Well, since my children have all gone through the Nutley School System and understanding the science department, I think it would be a great opportunity to have them do some workshops in that area and for them to understand what's going on and for them to, maybe they can learn in terms of having some vocational training. I know that there have been some programs with that, but I just think that that would be a good idea for them to have that exposure, for them to learn exactly what a medical facility is like.
Great, thank you. The Nutley Board of Education has to work together, but sometimes you might find yourself advocating for something that may not be popular with the majority of the board. Can you give an, can you give an example of a situation either in the board or somewhere else where you had to compromise? And I would ask Ken.
I can, actually. I was in a very uncomfortable position when I was president of this board a few years ago, and when we started looking at the budget, the board secretary came to me and said we have a $3.2 million shortfall. You have to make up in cuts $3.2 million. It's not really a great way to start your day. And one of the tough decisions we had to make is we had just finished privatizing the cafeteria. We were losing over $150,000 a year in our cafeteria. Then we make money on our cafeteria, which we privatized it. So we talked about privatizing the aides, and we had a meeting about it, and there were more people than I've ever seen before. It was a very uncomfortable situation with all the aides sitting there. And luckily, what we did, let me finish, please, very important. What we did was the union was there, and I looked at Mr. Stoffers, who was president of the union at the time, and I said, you can solve this situation for us. If you can get the last hundred people to switch their insurance to what everybody else has, which is equal to or better, it'll save the district $700,000 and we don't have to outsource the aides. And a day later, he came back to us and said we did it. It was a very uncomfortable situation, but it got done. We were able to save the jobs of all those aides.
Great, thank you. What is the Nutley Board of Education's primary purpose? Sal?
Okay, so it's not an opinion question, right? There's actual definition for it. The Board of Education adopts policies under which the school district operates, oversees the budget, approves curriculum, hires, evaluates a superintendent, represents the public during contract negotiations, and serves as communication link between the community and the school system.
Thank you. Why do you want to be re-elected to the Nutley Board of Education, Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, it took a lot of, it took a lot of conversation with my family because it's a tremendous amount of time. When I started, I was a psychologist who worked, you know, 35, 40 hours a week, you know. In the last five years, I've been an administrator where, you know, when the hours go 50 to 60 hours a week, you know, when you couple that with the volunteerism that's required, it takes a lot out of you. So I definitely sat down with my wife first and my kids to make sure, because they're getting older and my daughter's in eighth grade, and I wanted to make sure it wasn't a disruption to her socially. And when they gave me the blessing, you know, they understood it needed to be done because of the fact that, you know, we have, we have things that we need to accomplish and we need to keep doing. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things within our strategic plan that we have, you know, that we're showing a lot of progress and every year more and more progress, but, you know, we need to keep the core team together to make sure that all the goals that we set, you know, are followed through and seen.
Thank you. What do you see as the relationship between the Board of Education and the superintendent of the school, Sal?
Okay, so I read the definition of, or the school board's definition of the role of a Board of Education. I like the word that Debbie used, symbiotic. There's also another word, balance. Well, the Board of Education does, you know, have one employee that's the superintendent to oversee. We also have to follow her as the educational leader of our community. She's the one that got her doctorates to become a superintendent and is the professional. That being said, we have a community role, right? We have to place in check the things that while may be ambitious and fantastic programming-wise, we also have to make sure that in that capacity, things are sustainable and budgeted for. So there has to be balance and dialogue, and I think the word symbiotic or balance best describes that relationship.
Great, thank you very much. Tell us something you've done in the last year that has nothing at all to do with education that would give Nutley some insight into who you are as a person, Ryan?
I work a lot in education and I come back and spend a lot of time, you know, on the Board of Education, so there aren't a tremendous amount of hours, free time anymore. However, you know, I think, not to sound super cheesy because I'm pretty boring and not very, not very publicly emotional in public, but really being a father, you know, in all aspects, showing, showing the girls the ability to be a leader, to take, to take stands, to fight for what you believe in, as well as, you know, be there recreationally and emotionally. Communications, coaching their teams, that would be the one thing.
Thank you very much. Okay, if you have children in the Nutley School System, how does that form your perspective about how to serve your role should you be elected to the Nutley Board of Education, Erica?
I do have a son in the school district, he's six years old, and I think having him in the school district is one of the biggest assets that I would have as being on the Board of Ed. He comes to me every day and teaches me something new, whether it be about school, something he learned at school, or something he learned as a product of school from a child. He comes home and tells me the things they learned and how hard it was to learn or how easy it was, or little tips that his teacher gave him to help him do it better or more efficiently. And I get to see it from both ends of the looking glass. I get to see it from his perspective and from my perspective as being there and use both of them to collaborate, to make it even better, to make my perspectives better and to make his experience better.
Thank you. The Nutley Board of Education has to work together as a team, but sometimes you find yourself advocating for a stance that may be unpopular with the majority of the board. Can you give an example where you had to compromise in a situation, Terry?
Never been on the board, but I am, I do have my organization and we are, we are a group of four very strong-willed women, and we sit down at the table and we always have our own ideas, our own agendas, our own, and we basically, we learned that we, sometimes we have to agree to disagree, but we also learned that we have to advocate for what we believe in and come to some sort of compromise. And we have, because we've moved forward on, on things. But if I had to do that as a board member, I would, because I've had that experience working in an organization and, and working as, as a teacher, working with other teachers, working in a school system. And you, you really have to be a team player, but you also have to be able to, to advocate for things that you believe in.
Why do you want to be on the Nutley Board of Education, Ryan?
I have a lot of unfinished business. Unfortunately, a few years ago, I wound up having a stroke and then I was diagnosed with cancer, so I resigned from the board at that time after eight years of service. And one of the things I was addressing at the time was the overcrowding issue. And that overcrowding issue, if I could just correct Mr. Balsamo for a minute since he brought it up before, that, I'm not wrong with my numbers. Those numbers didn't come from me, by the way, the $100 million and the $36 million, that came from the board secretary last night, who said we already have $36 million worth of debt. We don't have 36 million left over. We have 36 million dollars we still owe on top of the $68 million that they're trying to sell us. That puts us over $100 million. That's where the numbers come from, I didn't make them up. That being said, that's why I'm here for the security reasons and that referendum. We have to revise it. We need space. I promise you, I'll bring you space in a much less expensive way and be accountable to the taxpayers at the same time.
Great, thank you. Tell us something you've done in the last year that has absolutely nothing to do with education that would give Nutley some insight into who you are as a person, Debbie? Uh, you got a minute?
One minute. I have two thoughts and I'm battling with myself which one I'm going to give. Been very fortunate to go to Mexico every year for the past five years. Decided this past year, in order to be an example to my kids, I need to learn Spanish. I had four years of French in high school. In college, I am not as fluent in French as I thought I was, so to show them that you need to be lifelong learners, I committed to learning French and have taken steps to start that process. My biggest part and the most vulnerable part for me, something I've never done or had happen. I was laid off this year this summer and I took that time, it took me three months to find a new job. I didn't sit back and let people decide it for me. I didn't go with popular opinion. I sought out, I researched, I did a lot of planning in this and collaborating, and I am happy to say two weeks ago, I started a new job and I love it. That's insight into who I am. I didn't jump at the first opportunity. We, we spent a lot of thought on things and getting opinions from experts and it also goes to show that I'm a taxpayer in this town, I'm a single mom. I got to put food on the table every night, so when we come to you with the...
Do you have, have you had children in the Nutley Public School System? How does that form your perspective? If you don't have kids in the district, what information would you use to form your perspective on how to serve again on the board, Sal?
I haven't been shy yet. I have Matthew, an eight-year-old at Anacola, and PJ, a 10-year-old at Anacola. They and their friends through coaching. One, keep me focused and centered on why I'm here to begin with, the children of the community are the focus of every board member. For me, I truly am a product of the Nutley School System. I was somebody's child in Nutley Schools, so I have that experience. But ultimately, as parents, my wife and I, both teachers, are my children and their friends and the children in this community. Education is my passion. From them, I see what they bring home, how they relate with their friends and giving them the best possible opportunities, them and all the children in the community. That's my life.
Thank you. Okay, that's the big long one, this question again. Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University opened this past June, on June 9th. What ideas do you have to give Nutley students exposure to medical sciences, Erica?
Being that I work in the medical field, I think it's a wonderful thing. I find it incredibly interesting and also very promising. I know one of the things we practice with my company is having students that are in high school or getting ready to graduate, going, coming to us and to our doctors and to our physical therapists to shadow for internships, whether it be volunteer, whether it would be something that would put college credits towards the college they were going to. And I think that's a great way to get the student involvement, especially with the shadowing. It's shadowing, it's giving up your own volunteer time, so their volunteering time, they're volunteering their own time, and they're getting something out of it. They're getting knowledge in the field that they might want to be in one day, and it might make them want to be a doctor, might make them want to pursue science in some fashion, but it's another tool and another resource for them. The more tools and the more research sources you have, the further you will go.
Thank you. Yeah, one person has not answered that question yet, so I'll read it again. Hackensack Meridian Medical School at Seton Hall University opened this past June. Students starting classes on June 9th. What ideas do you have to give Nutley students exposure to medical sciences, Debbie?
Aside from everything that's been mentioned before, our co-op with our high school students, they work part of the day, they go to school part of the day. That would be nice to get some of our students in there. We had field trips to other hospitals where my son got to witness a surgery and I thought that it was fascinating and that prompted him to go on to graduate school. So I'd like to see some field trips, maybe even for our middle school age children. And finally, guest lecturers coming into the various classes in the school would be wonderful. Have doctors and nurses and all the different healthcare professionals being able to come in and career day and teaching our students what they do and what they like about it and what it involves.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. What is the primary role of the Nutley Board of Education? Terry?
The primary role is to actually create policy, to oversee the superintendent, to make sure, to ensure that the board is doing what they're, or that the programs that are running are running efficiently. And to, basically, to adopt policy that really impacts the children and the employees and other types of situations that that can come up. So basically, it's policy and overseeing the superintendent.
Excellent, thank you. We're going to throw that same question to Ken after I read it. What is the Board of Education's primary purpose?
Again, I thought I answered this before, but anyway, it's to oversee the superintendent, evaluate her, make policy, vote on a budget, set goals and objectives for the superintendent, and help her achieve those goals and give her all the support that she needs to get that done, because at the end of the day, it's supporting our kids, our staff, and the success of those children down the road.
Thank you very much. We're running out of questions.
John, will there be questions from the audience?
Are you guys going to have a couple more questions from the audience?
Sure.
Everybody's going to have to answer the questions, so you can't just throw a question out. But we've got a couple more things that just have not answered the questions, and then we'll throw some questions out there. Okay. Nutley accomplished a lot in the last few years, Chromebooks, new math, new English language, art curriculum. What goals do you see for the next five or 10 years down the road for Nutley? Debbie?
Goals, I want to keep the momentum going from where we started to where we are now. Our Q-Sacs have been the highest they've ever been for us, our PARC scores are up, our AP scores are up. Everything is going up, and I want to be on the board, keep that momentum going forward. We keep doing our mission statement and evaluating that and refining that, just to keep the momentum going forward, moving this district forward.
Thank you. We're going to take the same question, some questions have not been answered yet. Nutley's done a lot in the last few years, Chromebooks issue, new math, English language, art curriculum. What goals do you have for the next five or 10 years down the road if you're elected to the board? Ken?
I see a long-term vision in getting us to where we want to get academically. We're doing a good job with what we have, as Ryan said earlier, the curriculum was redone, not once but twice over the last six years. We've improved there, but again, we can do better, we have to do better. Somebody mentioned Radcliffe School before, I think it was Sal. Radcliffe School has always been at the top, even before PARC testing. Mr. Carnegie does a fabulous job, there always has. But we need every school to be there, every elementary school should be there. We need to bring out, again, English, math, and science, that's our core curriculum, that's where we rarely have to focus and improve on all three categories.
Great, thank you. Is every question answered by everyone? Let's see if we have, we do have one? Okay. Do you have children or had children in the Nutley Public School District? How does that form your perspective on how to serve your role as a member of the Nutley Board of Education? Ryan?
I have two girls, one in Spring Garden, fourth grade, and then an eighth grader who's actually in the back of the room with their headphones on doing her homework. I don't know how she's accomplishing both, but I do have students in the, students in the school districts. What those students do, if we're being honest, the role of the board is to be there for the district, to be there for the 4,100 students, to be there for the 500 staff members, to be there for the township. So your role as a father is to try to maintain objectivity. So when your child comes home and reports something that's going on in a class, you have to push it to the wayside and you have to look. You act as a father, but as a board member, you have to remember that you're there for a purpose, and that's for the district. Similar to me being a psychologist and coming home with all the, you know, 70 credits to be a school psychologist, seven years in grad school, and then your kid starts crying and you lose perspective and you just start flipping out like everybody else, as opposed to, you know, doing the things that you learned through school. My kids help me keep, you know, keep objectivity and reminders to be objective.
Thank you. John, every question answered by everybody? We actually did have two people ask this seriously, to ask them, "What is it called, Taylor ham or quartal?" We're not going to ask that, it'll be done quietly. The Nutley Board of Education has to work together, but sometimes you find yourself advocating for a stance that may be unpopular with the rest of the board. Can you give an example somewhere in your life or on the board or on the board where you had to compromise in order to achieve a goal, Debbie?
I have to steal Mr. Klein's thunder, but I also want to see that February week-long break go away and have a long weekend. So being on the Board of Education, our vote is our voice, our voice is our vote, that we vote no to that. We bring it up, we pursue it, we push it, but that's how we make our points known and backed down. Again, it's what's best for our students, and that's what we advocate for all those students.
Thank you very much. We're going to take that same question, we're going to throw it to Erica after I read it again. The Board of Education has to work together as a team, but sometimes you find yourself advocating for a stance that may be unpopular with the majority. Can you give examples in somewhere in your life where you had to compromise in a situation? Erica?
I've never had to do it on the board, obviously, but those situations come up in life every day personally, professionally, and as a mother. I have to compromise with my child every single day. But I also have to make sure at the end of the day, I keep my ethics about it, and so does he, because I want to instill in him that his opinion matters and what he is bringing to the table matters, just as well as anything my coworkers might bring to the table that we might disagree on. As Terry stated, agreeing to disagree is not a bad thing, it's how you agree to disagree. If you do it in a fashionable way where everybody could sit down and get their point across and everybody maybe implements a little part of what they are seeing, that would be a great way, and sometimes it doesn't happen, life doesn't work out like that. But you have to at least be willing to take everybody's point to the table, work together, agree to disagree, but not compromise your ethics at the same time.
Thank you. What do you see as the relationship between the Board of Education and the Nutley Public School Superintendent, Brian?
Did I answer it? I mean, I'll answer it again.
It's similar to another question.
All right. My redundancy. Our relationship, you know, when it's a good relationship, it's collaborative, and it's to make sure that you can, you can, you know, push things aside so that she can be, she or he can be there for the true purpose of this instructional leadership. You know, I feel strongly that, you know, some of the purpose of us, especially in a pretty political town like Nutley, where we have a passionate, a passionate, you know, group of parents, and that's what makes Nutley great. But sometimes we have to make sure that we can kind of shield some of that so that our superintendent can be, you know, what they're there for, and that's to make sure that the education and the well-being of all of our kids, and those goals are being met.
Thank you. We're going to take the rest of opening up the floor. We're going, okay, but do the questions have to be general, like you can't say, you know, "Why do you buy a vehicle?" We can't do that. They have to be very general, like you know, fly.
Some of the people have commented on specific things that people might be fat patient on, it might not be appropriate for every person to answer that question. My question in particular, I just have it, only one person talked about it.
I'll let you write it down, and then we can determine. Because some of the comments that we got from the sent us some questions were kind of inappropriate.
It's not inappropriate at all.
No, we're going to switch the battery anyway, so I'm going to have to just write it down under this. So this one we're throwing out there, it doesn't say who it's directed to, so we're going to throw it out there, and we're going to start...
Well, it's directed at Kevin, because he talked about the prefabricated classrooms, so...
Okay, and then we'll let other people respond to see what they have picked. So this is going to Ken. I'm going to read the question, let you think about it when you're ready to answer, she wants to know more about clarifications on prefabricated classrooms, you know, where they're to be housed, and would accommodate the entire sixth-grade population.
Great question, and the answer is yes. Where do you want to put it? That's the question.
Consider for two.
Again, these classrooms are regular classrooms, it's not the trailer, it's a prefab modular, just like modular homes, you know, you can go to Roseland, there's a beautiful 42 condo development that they bring them on a trailer, they drop them in, and then the contractor connects the electric and the plumbing, and you're done. And again, they did eight of those in Maranac, New York, at a cost of $1 million, and they were done in two months. So we can rectify the overcrowding issue in months, not in years. And again, like the Camden School, 100,000 square foot, brand-new school, for $19 million, we really have to look at that. I don't think we've done our due diligence as a board, and that's why our three of us are sitting there right now.
Okay, does anybody want to address the issue of the suggestion of going to prefabricated classrooms? Ryan?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, because Mr. Riley first said eight in New York for $2 million, now we're saying eight in New York for $1 million. You know, had Mr. Riley been there last night, had Mr. Riley been a part of any of our lengthy, you know, conversations with the architects, as well as multiple architects, prefab are not a long-term solution, nor are the demographics of our schools and the tight landscapes available conducive to such a model. You know, our kids deserve brick and mortar and not prefab, not prefab. So I'm a little, you know, again, it was $2 million, now it's a million. You know, Mr. Riley also referenced, and I quote directly the words of our business administrator, but he actually wasn't there.
You can Google LAN Associates as the architect, L-A-N, and you'll be able to look at both of those schools.
In all due respect, you know, I would prefer to take the expert opinion of, you know, architects and multiple architects rather than Google, so...
So LAN Architects is also a school architect, they're one of the biggest in the country. I take their word.
Well, I mean, you know, we've spent five years on this, and, you know, we've only, we've only done how we always do things, and that's bringing in multiple sources of data and expert opinion. I would strongly reject to any suggestion of prefab, you know, modules, although that is the popular thing to talk about right now on social media, I guess, but it's not conducive, nor is it educationally beneficial.
Again, it's a regular classroom, there's no difference between brick and mortar and a prefab module, it's the same construction, it's two-by-fours, it's sheet rock, it's carpeting, it's tile, it's lights, it's plumbing, there's absolutely 0.0 difference, and the savings is dramatic, and you can't dismiss what the savings are. You can't say, "We want to spend $68 million when we can spend maybe 20 to cure everything, we want to spend 70." You haven't looked at it. And I'm really concerned about the bonding capacity, because afterward, what your board secretary said last night, it's very scary, because you guys may be putting us in a position, if it is true and we do exceed the bonding capacity, maybe that's another, you know, penalty that the state gives us in a monetary sense. And I'm concerned about that. And by tomorrow, I have the answers, I've already called the state, an attorney calling me back tomorrow from the state, I've already called the county, and I have them calling me back tomorrow. So I'll have the answer tomorrow.
Debbie, what do you think?
I just want to say, I'm not a builder, I only worked for one for 10 years in project management. And I actually designed my own modular home on Woodfield Avenue. They do come 85% complete, single-family homes. We also served as general contractor to finish that home, heating, plumbing, electrical, AC, and the like. It's vastly different for these structures that they're using for these schools on a temporary basis, but again, I'm not a builder, so I couldn't speak to that.
John? May? Like Ryan, I was also at a meeting last night. The bonding capacity is determined, according to our business administrator, on the town valuation. The total number was something like $140 million. The $36 million that's already on the debt, that's from previous referendums, subtracted from 140 gives you $104. $104 million, according to our board administrator, our expert, the person who keeps the books from the audit, from an outside company, said our total right-now capacity is for $140, minus the $36 that's on the books, leaving us with $104 million. That can be used. The referendum calls for 68 remaining. My math tells me $34 million should an emergency come up. My best understanding is that as property values rise over time, so will the valuation, expanding that $36 million that would be left over. That's what the board administrator said last night. I was there.
Got questions? We're going to go, are there any questions in the back first? Is your teacher voice the project?
In terms of educational trends, let's say in Pennsylvania, high school students have been sensible remotely, they have been almost... So have you looked into the educational trends? Do you know what's happening in terms of potential new legislative legislation, if there is any, in terms of for vote participation or attendance at school? You know, would that be considered? In essence, I think it's more the high school level, but it could apply at the elementary school level in terms of how it works on schooling, the most schooling office. I didn't know the research, I'm asking how.
Anybody want to answer that?
Well, actually, yeah, in my capacity, yes, sorry. In my capacity as a teacher, I've had experience with online programming. I've looked at it, just because professionally, it's come up in courses that I've taken, and what you find is, in many cases, there's a downside socially to interaction, problem-solving, and, you know, intercommunication between students, although, to a point, yes, it does lower costs, but it hasn't been showing a benefit to students. Also, remote learning raises a lot of questions about fidelity. Who is actually sitting, reading, taking? I mean, without the other technology, is there are some where you have to sit in front of a camera while doing things? But the biggest impact is socially and the fidelity part. Interestingly enough, as part of the academic committee, there is, I believe, whoa, I have to double-check, but I believe students that take personal finance in our buildings do so, not remotely, but through software.
Do you want to address remote learning?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. Actually, I had heard about a parent of a child who had cancer in the district, this is a few years ago, and they were really searching out for that type of programming, because they really felt that their child was isolated, their child could not go into school, they just can't. They have health concerns, and they can't be exposed to... They have health concerns and they can't be exposed to the other children. It was very difficult. And they were told the district did not have that capacity. And then they were told that, well, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be problems with other children and if you have them, it was ridiculous, basically was my thought when this happened. Because this poor child could not come into the district. They should have that opportunity to learn. Everybody is entitled to a free and appropriate education. Even children who are sick, they more so than anyone deserves a chance to learn. So I was very disappointed in that, and that would be something that we really should look into. Helping those children who are severely sick, they cannot attend school. So that's my thought.
I'm gonna go Debbie first.
Yeah, well, I agree that remote learning can save us a lot financially. I have to balance that against my belief that we have a more holistic approach to education, and it's not just the facts that we're teaching our children. We have to reach their mind, body, spirit, and emotions, and that's very, if not impossible to do, on a computer, just inputting answers and responses.
And Ryan, before we comment?
Yeah, I mean, as a, you know, it's, as a board member, one, we have to take the recommendation of our superintendent, who's the educational leader. As a director of special services, you know, somebody familiar with, you know, with some remote learning. There are a couple of local charter schools in the area that have tried it. One is a hybrid and two is a full model. Two of those have since gone out of business because of the effectiveness of it. I'm not a fan of it. You know, in situations like Terry, Terry's referencing, I mean, we have, there has been legislation, actually court statute, one with a law firm that I utilize in Belleville, where a parent did sue the school district in certain situations, it is permissible. But we do have home instruction for that. If there's a situation where a robot, you know, can come in and, you know, socially interact, allow the class to socially interact through a lens, you know, those situations do exist. However, overall, you know, there's a lot of options out there. Some of them were discussed last night. We have to make sure that the options, you know, are educationally beneficial, socially beneficial, and align with the strategic planning of districts. Right now, remote learning wouldn't be something that I would be in favor of.
Thank you. Hi.
There was a response.
Do your teacher voice project a little?
Okay. There was a response that the Board of Ed is the liaison between administration and the community. How often do you vet the program guide in the high school? I find that it's pretty outdated, the classes that are on there. A lot of them that my son in particular was interested in are not available. He tends to sign up for class and then the next year, they told, well, it's not on schedule because it was dropped. And he spent a good portion of two weeks trying to figure out how to fill that. Sent away, oh, it's not here, come back and you can find something else. So I find that the program guide is pretty outdated. So how often do you vet that and update it?
Thanks, Ed. John, is that all right?
Yeah.
Maybe you want to answer, maybe you could grab a glass of water or something? No, I'm just kidding. I'm saying, legal women voters, they usually provide water, but that's all right, John. When I work for the, ouch. I was gonna lay off candidate after you. In regards to the program studies, so, you know, the board, you know, the academic committee, you know, has presented the program of studies. Program of studies, you know, has to allow for a magnitude of classes based on, you know, based on the offerings. Sometimes the offerings do get trimmed down for budgetary reasons or just because, based on the cycle, things run in there. Some of the things the board's done over the last couple of years, you know, the middle school model, which focuses on the student, and then the drop schedule, which has dramatically increased, you know, the instructional time. When we do a drop schedule, when we do longer classes, one of the things that had to go in order to save some money was, you know, the offering of some classes. For enrollment reasons, you know, if we had, if there was classes. And the board doesn't decide that, the administration and, you know, and the students, the students who pick the classes, you don't make that decision. So if a curriculum, a program of studies is, you know, isn't updated, I believe it's updated. It's definitely every year. However, there's things in there that might not be applicable to that year. However, you know, the course could be offered at a different time.
John, is it okay if I figure that out?
Well, sure. I just wanted to point out that what Ryan said was correct. It's brought before the academic committee every year with the updates because updates change all the time. If the course is in there, but a student can't enroll in it, those are administrative decisions based on enrollment for those courses. If there's not enough students for the course, I know that they won't have the course that year. The program of studies lists the course offerings that we have teachers prepared to teach if enough students sign up.
I've got different information, but, you know, maybe there's a possibility to have that stuff put online where the kids could search for it instead of, you know, on a set of a piece of paper and then having to go back and forth, go this way, it eliminates some time they can search. Say, if they cancel, you know, not enough enrollment, you know, basically don't bother. And the descriptions of a lot of courses are very canned and not very informative to make a good decision on where they want to place their elective. It's very, it's not very up to date.
Definitely so.
You'll find that when you're touring around high school.
Thank you. I think we've got some more people who want to ask some questions. I'm gonna go back there and have them come up. I'm gonna go Melissa.
There's been a lot of talk about the middle school model and having six, seven, eight house in under one group, sort of sixth graders could, it's supposed to be better educational model or educational rigor. Curious, do you have an opinion on it? Do you believe in it? What are the pros and cons? Can you talk about that a little bit?
I believe in it. If you can answer that first. It's been beneficial. It's one of the reasons that everybody's up in arms to get this overcrowding issue handled immediately. You know, four years ago, before I got sick, I had proposed a plan to move the sixth grades for Yanacor and Washington into middle school. I'd asked John Colicchio, who was the principal at the time, if it was possible. He said definitely. And our plan was to move those two schools and then it did not have enough board approval, so it never happened. It could have happened, but it did not happen. That's a fact. You can shake your head, Lisa Martin, but that's a fact. And anybody can ask John Colicchio, who was the principal at the time. He's happy to come to, as a matter of fact, he'll come to legal women voters and he'll tell you the conversation that we had four years ago. But it does work. From what I understand, finally, almost all the teachers are certified at the elementary levels, except for one school, I think it might be Spring Garden. It's, I think it's Spring Garden, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think everybody else is certified. So we're already there. So that's a good thing.
Any else want to go for Brian?
Yeah, having been on the board, four years ago, John Colicchio wasn't the principal of the middle school.
All right, maybe it was five years ago, when John was here.
And the model, the recommendation, one of the considerations was from Superintendent Laszlo, that was to combine, one big school and one middle school, to get the numbers to about a hundred and twenty, which would equate to one team. Teams have to operate between a hundred and a hundred and twenty students based on scheduling. So one of Mr. Laszlo's recommendations was to take either a Yanacor and Washington and combine it with one of the two, one of the three smaller elementary schools because that number would have at the time equated to around a hundred and twenty. That would have fit. Combining Washington and Yanacor, the numbers were far too great even at that time. And that was not a possibility, it was not brought up. So it may have been when Mr. Riley was on the board before I was there, but it was not why I was on the board. Lucy Martin was there, she had her own theories. Definitely didn't happen then.
And Debbie, would you like to?
I would like to respond to that as well. I was on the board at that time, and while I certainly want to advocate for my own child, my place on the board is to advocate for every child in this district. And I felt that was grossly unfair to three of the other schools to hold them back and not have them expose the middle school model as well. So I voted no for that. I wanted the same opportunities available for all of our children in the district.
Anyone else want to take it?
But again, that's one of those, as you asked a question earlier, about one of those uncomfortable situations. That was an uncomfortable situation for us because we were trying to address the immediate overcrowding concerns, which we, and thank you for agreeing with me and remembering Mrs. Rupso, Mrs. Rupso. And it was uncomfortable because, as she just stated appropriately, the other three schools would not have been happy if we made that move and they got to have the middle school model you referred to earlier. So that's why it didn't happen. But it could have happened. The principal at the time, pardon me for my memory not being right, whether it was four or five years, but obviously John Colicchio was the principal. We did have the discussion. As I said earlier, again, I did not misspeak. It did not have board approval. I wanted to do it at the time I was the rep to Yanacor School, and they had a bigger issue than Washington at the time, now it's equal.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Because I forget all my information. If you might move two schools at that point, was there any plan in place to ever move the other three? Or was it still a linear way to?
Oh, sure, yeah.
What was that plan?
Well, the plan, that's when we began to talk about a referendum. And that's when we talked about the bike shop, that's when we talked about doing an addition, and so on and so forth.
What was the bike shop at this point? Did it go to the, on the, that sold the bike shop? Or did the town that owns that, was it that sold?
That was sold, that was purchased by the township.
By the township?
By the commissioners.
That's one of my complaints. I, I'm not sure if the town and the Board of Ed do not work well together. And it's, you know, it's one town.
I agree, it's one dollar.
The little things, and I'm saying, you should be working together.
Yeah.
As far as where the money goes, Cambridge, they did give money to the Board of Ed, each.
And municipality.
And now with all of this building that's going on with the apartments, is the board getting any money for this to help what's going on with the buildings and the teaching?
There's been no dialogue between Board of Education, to my knowledge, and the developer.
So, and that's where I feel the board and the town, not, I'm just speaking out, it's not something that, you know, anyone's fault. I'm just saying that I think that should.
No, it is. You know what? It's everybody's fault. Because everybody has to get there. Everybody has to sit down. We have to do a better job as board members and commissioners to sit down and worry about the taxpayers and the common good and what's going on. We're over developing everywhere, we're proving mixed use everywhere. You know, they said, they said that East Center Street wasn't going to be a big deal. Guess what? It's a big deal. Cambridge Heights took a lot longer to have kids than East Center Street. Cambridge Heights took ten years plus. East Center Street, three, four years later, we got fifty, sixty kids.
Effect now to go Washington.
Yeah, absolutely. We may need, we may need a new school. Depending on how many units are approved over there. They're gonna do residential development.
We're coming up with only twelve minutes left in the night, so we're gonna come up here because you've been waiting patiently.
I have a question, but I also want to start with a clarification.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I was in attendance last night at the town hall meeting. In fact, the entire purpose of that meeting was to inform about the referendum and obviously take questions. Someone else in the audience, I don't remember who it was, had asked Karen, this administrator, what the debt line was, and she said it was a hundred thousand, a hundred million dollars. I said, yes. She stopped. She went over to the neck, not to make the call. I don't know where you were sitting, but I was sitting right next to the woman who asked the question right in front of her. She said a hundred million. I then asked her what the debt was, and I can come here to argue with you people. I, I'm just clarifying. I then pushed her on what the current debt is that we were carrying. She did not have the answer to that, as you know, because you were there, which I thought she should have. That being said, she did also go get it, and she did go get it. If there was a miscommunication, that's fine. If it was really a hundred and forty million, that's fine. But by all indications, I'm not the only person who heard a hundred million. I've even heard other people talk about it. So it may have been a misunderstanding or a miscommunication, but that miscommunication absolutely did come, and it might have been pressure of getting asked that question and had her feet, had in her feet, called for fire, and questioned, she couldn't answer. I don't know, but that's my clarification. That, another issue entirely, here's my actual question, that's just clarification. You were asked, we were all asked earlier about your relationship or how you see your role with your relationship to the superintendent. I mean, my question is, how do you see that relationship, which is not necessarily in your bylaws, your relationship to the parents, more specifically, and taxpayers in general?
Sal is the first hand, and I think that's our.
Sure, I mean, that's a fantastic question. Both, because I'm both. I'm a parent and I'm a taxpayer. The relationship is very important. I have a responsibility, you know, and I think I said it before, with regards to programs that come before us, the best recommendations of the superintendent. The first question I always ask is, is it in the budget and is it sustainable? And then I ask to see, is it sustainable? Because while the proposal itself might be fantastic for parents and students, right? It also has to be planned for so that it's not there one year and gone another. So as a taxpayer, you know, I'm cognizant of the fact that my taxes also go up every year. But as a parent, you know, I also want, you know, other parents to, want the kids to have the best educational program. With respect to parents, as a liaison, as special highlighted definition, I've never not answered a phone call, responded to an email, or had a conversation with anybody that ever worked on it.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I think I think Sarah is going first.
I think that the relationship to the parents and the children is that we should have total accountability to you and transparency on all issues.
And Jerry?
I've been going to board meetings, like, since the dawn of time, seriously. And one of the things that always irritates me is when I or anyone else gets up to the microphone and asks a question, and it's like this dead silence, and we don't hear any answers. Not, oh gee, you know what, I'm gonna get right back to you in two days, or tomorrow, or whenever. Whenever somebody gets to that microphone, they're in it, and you don't know, just like the experience that you had last night. You, if you need to know that information then, it is the responsibility of the board to make sure that that information is there. Transparency is very important. Accountability to the parents. The parents give our children, their children over to the district every day, for six hours a day. I mean, we, this is a huge responsibility that a Board of Education takes because they are basically overseeing a program that has four thousand students in it, every day, for a hundred and eighty days a year.
And Debbie wants to take it too.
Sorry, I'm getting a little confused. Last night, forgive me, I left a little early, I wasn't feeling well. Was there when the business administrator came back out and gave the clarification that you were looking for? I don't know if you were still there or you left, I wasn't sure. As far as transparency and community, yes, when we can be. There's many instances legally, I'm sure you know, where we can't divulge information. We're not privy to some information and we can't divulge information. So when we sit there, you know, sometimes it's killing us to sit there, but we can't talk about specific students ever, we can't talk about staff ever. And those are the times that you will get the blank looks because we have to stay discreet. Those times that we don't have to stay discreet, I think this board has been most transparent. There's more things online than there ever was, updating our website. There's more things online, um, than there ever was, which, um, updating our website was huge, and a huge task that we've been after for a while. So, transparent when possible, and, and relating to the community, the community, that, that's what we're here for. Our students are part of the community, many of our staff is part of the community. We're all to be part of the community.
We are six minutes from nine o'clock, so we'll take one more question. I'm gonna throw it over here.
I just think of the last year of middle school.
We'll get you a last one.
If I understand, everybody's in support of the middle school model, is that correct? So, how does that, if the referendum doesn't pass, how does true middle school model happen if the kids are not all in the same school?
It's already happened.
It's already happened, because that does.
It's already...
So, how are they the same?
No, because you're not certified.
So, so if you say true middle school model...
No, except for Spring Garden, she's asking.
When you say true middle school model, you don't mean necessarily under the same group?
It was called the middle school model, because that was the origin of it, started in the middle school.
But, so you're, you're saying that sixth grade is not...
It's my understanding that all the sixth grades, except for Spring Garden, are already learning in that middle school model, the sixth grade.
Yeah, she clarified that.
So, and, and it's my understanding that it's...
They don't have science, they don't have gym daily, they don't invite them daily. It's not true middle school, they, they rotate for you?
Well, Dr. Glazer said it was last night, so you should take it up with her. I didn't see you question her on it last night.
So, but that's, so this is my question, if, if this middle school model isn't exactly true at the sixth grade...
Thank you, I will.
How, then, how do you reconcile that if the referendum doesn't pass?
Like I said, it's my understanding, what these ladies just said, that the children are already receiving that, except for the teachers that are not certified.
Well, I, I mean, my son just graduated from sixth grade, I can tell you, they don't have Spanish every day, they, they don't have history every day, they don't have Spanish every day, it's different. It's different at the elementary school than it is in the middle school.
Well, Dr. Glazer last night actually said that all... But Dr. Glazer had reported last night that all schools, except for Spring Garden, is on, they're under the middle school model.
So, basically, that you're saying sixth grade doesn't stay at the elementary school, and there would be no plan to combine them at the middle school?
Ultimately, we're gonna address the overcrowding, as you said earlier today. So, when that happens, they'll be together.
With the fat, fat, and happy middle school?
It, it depends. Let, the public will decide on November sixth if they want to approve that referendum or not. I'm against it. I'm against the fourth one, and I'm against this one.
People can't afford the taxes?
I'm, I'm for, by the way, nobody hates trailers more than me. I hate putting those trailers at Yanacor School. It, it ate at me every single day I was on the Board of Education. I was the one that said, let's move them, but again, they didn't want to move kids.
The kids in the trailer, Steve, you're not in building that's secure. You all have security.
John, could I, could I?
John, John, let's put the brakes on this.
I think we need to play with my sister.
Just to answer that, she deserves an answer, I like to, John, she deserves an answer, I like to hear it. The prefab modular units can be attached to existing buildings. Okay? That solves, that solves your security issue. And by the way, by the way, we should have fences around those trailers now anyway for security.
Can you clarify me what that school district was that you said?
The Marinapp.
Okay, I actually looked at other school district, they had a proposal to get them, but they did not.
No, they did get them, and they, and they built a hundred thousand square foot school in Camden.
Okay, the Marinapp school...
I'll, I'll, I'll show it to you. We're finished, but I'll show it to you.
And then we are going to go to the last question of the night.
I have a few broad questions.
We're gonna, Ralph is gonna close out the night?
All right. My question is actually too long, because it's not fair to them, because they're not on the existing board now, but, but not, some of these questions aren't fair, because if you have an inside on the board now, you can ask them differently. But here's my question. Last night when I, and I will say last night, if I see, uh, you're here, because last night, when I asked President Marsala if the school had exhausted all the options before they came to this referendum, um, and if they addressed the green acres, um, he said, no, you never addressed the green acres issue, and that, uh, you never addressed it. And my, my next question is, if this referendum does fail, will the, will the newly elected, uh, people, if you do win the election, will you take, uh, make this a priority to address green acres and ask for that space? If the space is available, we did not exhaust all the options, just because it's on a list that says it's green acres, doesn't mean it's all green acres. There are circumstances, you have to start initiation process, there's diversion every meeting you could have, and, and most cases, when it's hardship, when the township or the school district doesn't have the space, it's granted.
So, what is the question?
So, the question is, why wasn't that addressed? Why wasn't that thoroughly looked into and all options exhausted before we had to put up a referendum or the original referendum on the table?
So, you know, I, I believe the architect responded last night in regards to, no, 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 please, please, we talked about viable options, options that are educationally beneficial as well as financially, so, you know, somebody giving lands, and again, you know, we hear things about, you know, On3 giving us land, and Green Acres having land, although I think you referenced, you know, some land outside of, of the township, somebody giving us land would still require us to build a school on that land, which would still have a substantial financial impact to the township.
And so, sixteen, right about a month.
So, right now, we, we have, you know, we have, we, we have, we have, we have an opportunity, and we have the proposal that meets the financial, best meets the financial needs and the instructional needs. Um, building, building a random school at On3, you know, let alone the fact that that land, um, you know, hasn't been, hasn't been offered, although conversations have been held, um, would, would put a school at the far end of town, which would require busing, which, which would not be educationally sound. This is, this is a five-year journey that we've taken, a five-year journey that, that hasn't involved, you know, anything along the lines of Google or anything like that. It's been along the lines of expert opinion, community input, conversations with leaders inside and outside of the district, and, and this is, this is what we feel. It's up to the public to vote on it, but this is what we feel is the best option, instructionally and financially.
You can build, you can build a house, walls, food. If you build, keep building up a house, six, seven, eight, three, nine, middle.
We're gonna be thrown out of here for a while, until we're getting out of here.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.